Lead funding is the LAP program, for example, bilingual program is in there. The red piece there, forty-five million dollars is federal funding. So this is where impacted is the federal special ed funding, all the title grants, as well as our new federal stimulus one-time Esther dollars are in there as well. And then also highlight the light green there, which is twenty million dollars local taxes, otherwise known as our levy. So staying with revenue, so this is a year-over-year comparison. So you'll see in the middle there, that's the twenty-one, twenty-two budget. Just to the right of that is what we adopted the state last year. And the far right is the difference between the two. So I'll point your eyes towards the very bottom right of the screen. You'll see that we are projecting to have about sixteen and a half million dollars more revenue than we projected last. Now, there's a good reason for this. So if you look at the federal portion here, this, you'll see this Esther lines, the one-time Esther dollars or COVID relief funds that we're receiving from federal government as part of the stimulus package. So we're projecting an additional seventeen million dollars right there, federal funding. Now you'll see there are other differences as well throughout this sheet. If you just look at the top right, you'll see local property taxes are increasing. That's because such valuation is going up. But that also causes the local effort assistance or LEA, which you see in the state general purpose funding, go down. And then there are various other changes up and down throughout the worksheet. Okay, available resources. So we talked about beginning fund balance of thirty-eight million dollars. We add in our general revenue of two hundred and seventeen million dollars. We add in the one-time Esther revenue for COVID relief and seventeen million dollars. Given us a total available resources of two hundred and seventy-two million dollars. Operating expenditures, so we'll look at expenditures in a few different ways. The first here is by objects. So we'll highlight here certificate salaries, classified salaries and benefits. Those are staffing costs. That's about seventy-eight percent of our budget, which hovers right around the percent number, which we're, which is our goal. So that's pretty close. So we have a total expenditure budget of two hundred and thirty-seven million dollars. Look at it by activity here. So the first line administration, about three percent of our budget. So this is the state OSPI defined version of administration. In reality, our costs are higher because we have ministers throughout the district. So if we were to look at our central administrative costs, it's more about more in the line of six and a half percent rather than three percent. But that's just for your information. And then we have instruction, instructional support, which comprises over eighty percent of the budget, not surprisingly. Student nutrition and people transportation each have about three percent of the budget. Maintenance operations, about seven percent of the budget. Other services, about two percent of the budget. We have a little budgeted for public activities. Okay, one more way to look at expenditure by program. So regular instruction about half the budget. Federal stimulus dollars, the one-time COVID relief funds, twelve million dollars or five percent of the budget. Then we have the special education, so a fairly robust budget of thirty-three million dollars or fourteen percent of the budget. Vocational education, which is our CT program, about three percent of the budget. Compensatory education, this, these are where the LAP and title programs are. The bilingual programs, for example, almost eight percent of the budget there. Other instructional programs, this is where we will find our DODIA programs, about three percent of the budget or seven million dollars. Community services, this is where the E-CAP program is located. That's the bulk of that, about one percent of the budget. District required support, so this is the operational side of things. Maintenance operations, business office, human resources, for example, about thirteen percent of the budget. And then rounded off with student nutrition and people transportation, each about three percent of the budget. So again, total expenditure budget of two hundred and thirty-seven million dollars. So we'll touch on M-SOCs here real quick. So materials, supplies and operating costs, really the, the non-staffing costs. So the first line there, you see the state provides us revenue of fourteen and a half million dollars for M-SOCs. We are projected to spend eighteen point four million dollars of M-SOCs, leaving the local dollars to pick up about three point nine million dollars of M-SOCs. All right, so here are the budget reconciliation for the general fund. So it summarizes what we talked about. So the beginning fund balance of thirty-eight million dollars. We add in our revenue budget of two hundred and seventeen million dollars, plus the additional Esther one-time Esther dollars of seventeen million dollars, give us a total available resources of two hundred and seventy-two million dollars. And we subtract our expenditure budget, two hundred and thirty-seven million dollars. So that leaves us a projected ending fund balance for next year of thirty-five point six million dollars. All right, so that was a general fund. Let's look through the other funds quickly here. So first we have the ASB fund, that's the student run budget. So it's a pretty consistent budget year to year. They hover in the four, five hundred, six hundred thousand dollar range over here. The debt service fund, this is to pay our bond debt. And capital projects fund, to pay for our major construction projects. We aren't looking at a whole lot of revenue next year for this fund. We built in a capacity of twenty-five million dollars to fund our projects. And then the transportation vehicle fund on the far right. So that's, this fund is only by yellow school buses and that's it. We get money from the state. We are projecting or we're building in a capacity of a million dollars for next year. We don't expect much or any activity in this fund next year because we don't plan on buying a lot of school lists. All right, for your projections, so first we'll go with the general fund. So this summarizes again what we had talked about. See the twenty-one, twenty-two budget on the left, projected to end the year at thirty-five point six million dollars. And then we expect things to level off. This is with the assumption that the effects from the pandemic will ease and maybe bring some, I guess, for lack of a better word, normalcy to the budgeting process. And then we have our enrollment projection at the bottom. We have seen a decline in the last few years. We're hoping to see an uptick though, as families bring their kids back to school over the next few years. But it's a modest, conservative approach right here. The ASB fund, again, the student run budget. This is just to show it's a consistent budget. We don't expect too, too many highs or too many lows. The projection for the debt service fund, again, this is to pay our bond debt. So this is really built on the debt schedule. So property taxes coming in to fund our bond principal and interest payments. For your projection for the capital projects fund. So we, we don't expect a lot of revenue with this fund over the next few years because we have no, we don't, we don't have, we're not projecting a bond, for example, or a, or a capital projects levy. That could change, of course. But with the information that we have now, we're not projecting a lot of revenue. And then we built it in expend, expenditure capacity to handle any of our projects that come our way. And finally, the transportation vehicle fund, again, to buy yellow school buses. This year we're not, or this, next year, we're not projecting to buy many or of any school buses. But we do expect to see in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, some purchases. And that concludes my quick presentation, and I'll take any questions if you have any.
Yeah, I have a, a question. I went ahead and raised my hand in the window. Greg, I'm encouraged by the projections for enrollment increasing, you know, incrementally over the next four years. And I know that it's been amazing, as I've been on the board, our enrollment projections have always been, you know, very accurate, very close. Can you help me understand why it is that you believe that our enrollment's going to incrementally increase over the next three to four years?
Well, so it'll depend on, on the kindergartners that come in. But we are projecting, we, we look at the birth rates from five years ago, and we see those numbers going up, which tells us our enrollment will go up. That's the primary pivot of it.
So the Alyssa Piersons of Lakewood are really helping us out here, and we appreciate that. So thank you, Alyssa. Thank you, Greg. Paul, I noticed you had your hand up in the box. Greg, as people raise their hand, you can feel free to call on the two.
Okay, um, Greg, thank you. I've got several questions. Administration expense on the one slide, I think, I didn't write the slide number down, so I'm sorry. You had three percent, but you said it's closer to six. Tell me why that is. You know, normally in business, you think things are good if you're under ten for administrative costs. So help me understand that one, please.
Yeah, so how we're presenting things tonight is based on how we will some, it's, it's a summary version of what we, we will submit to the state. So this is kind of how we have to show it to you. And so OSBI considers administration, the board of directors, superintendent's office, the business office and human resources. So we know that we have, we have administrative costs throughout the district. For example, the maintenance operations and the transportation, right? So we have all these other administrative costs that we know that really are true central administration. So we gather those costs and really it's more like six and a half percent. But when we're presented it to OSBI, it's for their purposes, it's three percent.
Okay, so, you know, people always say that, you know, we're top-heavy and, and I know we worked hard not to be that way. So you're pretty confident that our overhead and people that is closer to six percent and we're still below ten?
Correct.
Okay. On slide, I think it was eleven or twelve, I'm not sure. There, there's a line item in there, community services. What, tell me about that again, please.
Community services, that is nearly all of it is the E-CAP program.
Is the which program?
The E-CAP program, so the early learning program.
Okay, E-CAP, all right. Thank you. And then I'm, I'm disappointed on the M-SOC. Why, why are we having to cover that? You know, the state, I think, puts in about twenty-five hundred dollars per student. And, and we can't do it for under that? What's the problem?
Well, it's, part of it's just site-based budgeting, so we do allow the buildings to budget for those type of things. Doesn't mean they will spend it, I guess, too. But it also, also comes down to the fact that this is basic education funding too. So we know that the, the funding level for staff is not adequate at the state level. So this, this also shows that it's not adequate to fund the other costs as well.
So what, what's the true cost then for M-SOC? Because isn't M-SOC paper copies and all that kind of stuff? Isn't that what M-SOC is?
Yeah, it's everything other than staffing. So it could be all of your contractual services, your, your professional development consultants that you bring in. So the true cost is really what we budgeted, and that's our estimate for, for M-SOCs.
So we're, we're three million short on M-SOC?
Yes.
That's amazing, three. Okay, all right, I'll, I'll look at that again. Can you tell me if, if the bank called our note today, what, what's our total debt? And, and what's, and what's our annual interest that we're paying?
I don't have that number off the top of my head. I know our total debt is around a hundred and twenty million.
Hundred and twenty million? So if they, if they called our note today, we'd have to pop for a hundred and twenty million?
Well, they wouldn't call our note today. It's, it's based on a debt schedule that is set by the
Paul, there's bonds and levies and repayment, and I think it's one twenty-four. And so it's not something that they call, it's a schedule that you pay it back on.
Okay, and so how much interest are we paying, you, you know, every year?
I don't have that number right now.
Okay, I'd be interested in that if we could get that sometime. Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, seeing no other hands up, thank you, Director Hart. And we will move forward with Brian Lobach, Deputy Superintendent, who will be giving a report on our recovery plan for the summer and fall. All right, let's get there with the sharing of the screen. All right, well, thank you again tonight, Board President, Board Members, Superintendent, for the opportunity to share what we are doing this summer and our plans moving into the fall. As we reported, this slide deck here will look pretty familiar. This is the slide deck we used in April. On the state legislature in-house bill sixteen thirty-eight, in OSBI set a deadline to June first for school districts across the state to have their plans in. Our plan was in on time and it has been subsequently approved. And the funding has been released, as you heard Greg Hart talk about, to our academic recovery plan. So we wanted to make sure, since our report in April was sort of preliminary and, you know, sort of what we were thinking at the time, we wanted tonight to give you a little update on what we're doing this summer, some of the partnerships we have, any of the new tools we're using, and then kind of look forward to the fall. Again, some of those partnerships moving forward to September, and then some new tools that we have coming in place for that. This will give us some time over the summer to get ready for our September one school date. Just remember the context for the recovery plan, right? We're just talking about the loss of time in school for, you know, this ability to forge and maintain relationships, making connection, belongingness. I'm also thinking about what can we do to support mental health for students? And then really, you know, academic support systems. This was all the elements that you could find in our plan. And this is a reminder, this slide was something you saw in April as well, really. And I'm going to show you some data here a little bit. But, you know, students did learn during the school year, right? It was about the loss of time in school, in session, in a building. But our summer, this, our summer school this year is all about giving more time in buildings, right? Having students, having more access with teachers, more time with teacher, build some relationships with new students, and just have some fun, but also learn at the same time. So our recovery plan has basically these three buckets, right? We talked about the academics, right? Trying to keep kids up at grade level. Their social, emotional learning shifts, right? Making sure that they maintain relationships. And then we have activities, you know, just have that sense of belongingness to the school community, right? So, and that school connection. So through the school year, we did monitor student growth. We did give our STAR and MAP assessments grades K through eight. In the fall, those tests were mainly remote. At home, the parents were the proctors. At winter testing, we had a mix of remote and in-school testing kind of depending which grade band was back in the building at that time. And then in spring, mostly all that testing occurred at the school building. So we had watched growth across the year, and we did see some growth. So our median growth percentile, K eight, from fall to spring was twenty-three for math and thirty-four read, and thirty for reading. Typically, this growth percentile range is one to ninety-nine. And typical growth for a group of students is somewhere between thirty-four and sixty-five. So we're a little bit shy in math, a little bit better for reading. What we saw in our growth in terms of STAR and MAP was the typical schools that perform at the high end of the scale were those same schools and our typical schools that performed lower at the same place. And like I said, better growth in performance and reading. So we know this going into the summer, that was a lot of our planning is around some of this information. It's also something we can pick up in the fall, again, looking at. We have some opportunities here in the fall where the state postponed smarter balance testing in the spring and moved it to the fall. So we should be able to monitor growth using the state assessment tool, smarter balance, grades four through eight. Because the fourth graders in the fall are going to take the third grade smarter balance assessment. And then in the spring, take the fourth grade version of the fourth grade smarter balance assessment. So we should see if there's any growth between these two points in time. The same is true about sixth grade, the sixth graders are going to take the fifth grade smarter balance in the fall and the sixth grade smarter balance in the spring. The other thing we did is we looked at our assessments, our district assessments. STAR and MAP are both district assessments. And we, due to some other opportunities, moved STAR grades K five. This allows us to have one assessment platform, able to monitor the growth over K through fifth grade in the same tool. Up until now, we've been in two platforms. We were going to have to move to STAR for second grade. And we just thought, okay, let's just make sure we have one platform that can assess district growth on K five. So STAR will be our assessment in the fall. So we'll talk a little bit about this. We had these broken up like this in the spring when we talked to you in April. And this is what we were looking at as our plan, some early literacy language labs for our multilingual learners, project-based learning, working on math readiness, and then blending in our special ed students, both from academic recovery for special ed students and extended school year recovery services for special ed students. So since all of that thinking, we have four school sites going right now. All sixteen elementary schools feed into one of these four sites, Custer, Evergreen, Four Heroes and Lakeview. Our current session that's going on right now, which has three more days, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, has seven hundred and twenty-one students attending those four sites. You can see six seventy-four for session two and six fifteen for the third session. A note there, majority of the students are attending all three sessions. There's very little difference between the seven twenty-one, six seventy-four kids. But our program offerings really expanded. We have early literacy going for kindergartners with our Washington Reading Corps tutors who are taking a curriculum from the state. That's very strong in early literacy, so they're providing that certain for kindergartners. We also do early literacy around for first grade. There are some K two project-based learning taking place. We partnered with Tacoma Arts Live, and they are doing some hands-on learning. There's actually a play being presented at Evergreen on Thursday morning as a part of this partnership with Tacoma Arts Live. The language labs are around our multilingual learners. We have STEM camp going on at all these sites. Our partnership with the YMCA has brought power scholars, so that extends the day for the kids. So they are with our instructors up until about eleven-thirty. At eleven-thirty, then move to the YMCA staffing, and then they can stay till one, one PM. And so it gets some out active, a little bit different than what we're doing in our activities above. We're working with fifth graders on helping them access middle school math so that they have a good transition into middle school, community circles. And then we have our students with IP's, our academic recovery for them is blended, right? So we have gen ed and special ed students all in the same classroom, learning together. Kids can rotate in these activities. So they might have been in STEM camp in session one, but then, then move to, to come arts live perhaps in session two. So a lot of activity, a lot of students, a lot of buses running around, a lot of food being served at schools every day. Except for today, it was a little too hot to be running school today. So middle school, this was sort of our thinking at middle school. And this is what we shared with you back in April. We have one site for middle school, that's Thomas Middle School. We have all four middle schools feeding into that location. Currently, we have one hundred and thirty-four students being served there. There's the math club, the community circles, reading comprehension clubs, they have robotics taking place, language lab for our multilingual learners. Again, that's project-based learning. We also have the YMCA at Thomas Middle School, kind of getting started on our programming for the fall. We kind of hope that maybe enough middle schoolers to run program at all, or three of the middle schools. But right now, we only got one, and we've got the Y there as well, extending the day for the kids there. I forgot to mention at the elementary site, we've got Boys and Girls Club helping out at Lakeview. So we partnered with them, they take forty students and have them for the full day. So they'll have them in the morning before our program starts. They bring them over to our program, pick them up at the end of ours, and then finish out the day over at Boys and Girls Club. But we've been working with them on forty, forty-ish students, is what the numbers are. In high school, I think really back then, we were just thinking about credit retrieval and maybe some other summer programs. We weren't really too sure what all that looked like, and this is what it come. We have enrichment programs right now at Clover Park and at Lake, serving over, well, over a hundred fifty students, each hundred sixty-three at Clover Park and a hundred fifty-four at Lakes. You can see these enrichment activities are a little bit different based off of the school culture and school community. But there's all sorts of hands-on learning going on and activities for students in addition to credit retrieval. So down below at Clover Park, you see two hundred and fifty-eight students in credit retrieval. We expanded credit retrieval down to ninth grade. So because we know kids lost some credit from their ninth grade year, and we're getting them started early on recovery. Lakes has a hundred and eighty students in there, credit retrieval. I forget what, I'm going to add this up for another document, it's close to, was it close to seventeen hundred students we have participating in our programming between the elementary, middle and high school. We also have been, back in April, we, and may asked about this online tutoring program called Paper. And we enrolled with them. And this is some data from just a couple of months that we've been in Paper, right? We're working on its expansion, it's twenty-four seven online tutoring support for students. And you can see the top subjects were algebra, basic math, essay writing was very popular. We had ninety-seven students really made up two hundred and twelve sessions, right? Completed thirteen essays. So while this needs to be a bigger, bigger numbers, pretty good for a soft rollout in the spring. We're working on making sure we're getting it running for, you know, it's being discussed at summer school as well through the credit retrieval programming and those math labs that we have at the middle school. But we're also looking at how to build it up for the fall. And we did do a little demographics of, you know, who's attending our summer schools. This was based on some early enrollment data. There's four hundred and eighty-four students here, but it's actually more than that. But just to kind of show you that we're running essentially in the same numbers of our demographics. So not one group really outnumbering another group, right? Kind of in the same ballpark areas. We do have a few more military families taking part, and as you can tell probably out at Evergreen Elementary, there's a large population at that school, taking part in our summer programming. But not a bad thing, just it's probably the largest difference that's out there. So when we look to the fall, we're going to take our work on project-based learning, PPL, and continue emphasis on that. We are working on making our PLCs dig deeper into the data and how are they going to address what kids have missed? Or what they need to yet learn, right? As they spend more time at school. We're looking at increased inclusion and include, and inclusionary practices. Making sure our ELL students or SPED students are not separated and moved off to a different classroom for a different time of the day, but actually all included in the gen ed classroom. But actually all included in the gen ed classroom and then providing teachers some instructional moves or practices. To keep kids engaged as well as support in the classroom. On the P L C work really is connected to this multi-tiered system of support. If we know all students are getting this and then some kids need some additional support, what does that look like and what is that? That's what the P L Cs really need to be focusing on. Again, we know social emotional learning and mental health. We've expanded our partnership with Greater Lakes Mental Health. They're going to provide expanded service. All of our schools off base, that's something that we're looking forward to. We will continue to partnership, our partner with the YMCA at the middle schools. We're going to bring in their. Oh gosh, what can I think? Oh. Community learning centers is what they're called. So we'll have those at Blackburn, Thomas and Hotwell. We'll of course keep our partnership with Boys and Girls Club lens, which is the Tacoma Arts Live program. We renewed our partnership with Mesa already, which is the math engineering science. Program that we partner with P L U and our middle schools. Just to talk about our district and school focus for twenty-one, twenty-two. Some of our school annual action plans, the top row is saying, this is what you're doing for all students. Right? For everybody across the system, all of our schools will have these strategies in their annual action plans. And then the bottom row is about what are you doing to ensure mastery? Of what you've produced or taught to all students. So all of our schools will have the strategies and their annual action plans. And then they're going to step these out in terms of how are they going to actually actualize this in their building? But everyone's going to work in this direction. It may look a little bit different depending on the building. And we're not saying we're cookie cuttering. It needs to be cooker cookie cutter, but we want you to do these things, right? So as a system, we're all going to be focused on this. And then how you go about applying that at your building will be specific to your school, your school culture and your school community. Our funding sources, of course, the summer have been our learning assistance funds. You're a little, little bit about that and Greg's report, the lap funds, our title one funds, which are compensatory funds. We'll be using some of those S R recovery dollars. Special ed has funded some of the summer as well. When we go into the fall and beyond, of course, we'll continue to use our compensatory funds, lap the title funds. We may need to dip into some S R funding, especially around mental health support and our support about social emotional learning with the YMCA. And then continue special. Funding. So questions?
Think I see Carol's hand, Brian. Oh, yes.
Oh, you know, I just want to comment. I, I think this was a fantastic. I think the summer enrichment learning program, Brian, I want to just kudos to teaching and learning. And the groups that put this together, because I look at the programs, it seems like for a lot of them, it's almost like summer campish.
Yes.
Sort of opportunities. I, I am so, I, I'm just so impressed with them that there's something for everybody when at the high school level. When you're looking at, you know, arts and band and sports along with the academics. We've never done that before, because I'm going to say we've never had a year like we've had this year before. And I don't think the numbers, I wish they were bigger, but I'm going to say. I did not speak to one parent who wasn't really burnt out and kind of just done. They're done. That being said. I don't think the low numbers indicate lack of interest. I, I just think it's a culture of what we've gone through this year. And you know.
Actually, at high.
Job.
I suppose we've almost, we're almost three times as high as what we've normally been. We typically do about a hundred and eighty students in total for credit retrieval.
But that's credit retrieval. That's not other options, correct?
So and that's all we've ever had is a hundred eighty students.
Kudos, kudos to you for making that happen. I really think, I don't want anyone thinking that. You know, I, please, I, I don't want the district people.
Oh, no.
Don't care that people aren't appreciative. I, I think parents are just kind of really kind of done now. That being said, can a student join into a session, second and third session if they don't participate in the first section or the second session?
Yeah, we've been kind of having rolling enrollment as people learn about what we're doing. Kids have been joining. It's. You just have, you know, it keeps the village alive, right? We have to have transportation meetings every week and talk about how we're getting kids back and forth to school, but.
Sure.
Change the bus route, right?
The other thing is, is when you talk about planning for the twenty-one, twenty-two year. I've never seen a rollout that, and I think the schools really understand, they've got to reengage community. They've got to reengage parents. They've got to, they've got to create what many of them had or what we're working on before everything was shut down. So I think that this year is going to be a huge, just that type of programs going on. And if we can successfully do that, I, I think that's kudos to what you all have done. I don't, you know, when, when we talked about the numbers that have, that fell this year. You know what? We just, we needed to get through this year and we need to move forward and you've done that superbly. Thank you so much.
And the kids are smiling and having fun. I hear, I hear a report every day about kids smiling, about getting off the bus, right?
Thank you for the opportunities.
Oh, Anthony. Had to look for the.
Yeah, great report. Thank you for, for sharing that. I think we've got some excellent programs coming along. Especially to help the students. One in particular that I really liked though was Paper. My understanding that it was twenty-four seven and does this offer for all subjects?
All subjects, sixth grade and above. So it's for our middle schoolers and our high schoolers. But yeah, it's all subjects. It's been heavy in math and essay writing. But in spring, there's a lot of essay writing happening in school, so hopefully that'll expand. I mean, that is our goal with expansion, expansion, expansion.
I like that. Yes, I can agree that that makes sense. And are, are these live tutors or is it kind of more automated as far as the response? Say a student has a question, how, how does that get answered?
Well, there's a, actually a live tutor on the other end, but it's done through chat. So they, they may show them what they're trying to work on and then the person will show them how to get it done. So they don't have the same tutor every time necessarily, right? Because it's really about who, who's out there on the other end to answer your question that you have. There's no.
No, Brian, we might want to remind the board that the reason that it's chat is because of HIPAA requirements and other things in terms of. Of being live and being available, but not be invasive to students.
Right.
Excellent. Excellent. Okay, sounds good. Well, those were my questions. Thank you.
Paul?
Unmuting here. Okay, on slide four, I think it is.
I think it's.
Learning loss.
Yeah, learning loss. Can, can you walk me through that, those words there? You know, there's some things on there that, you know, we must let go of standardization. What does that mean? You know, so help me think through that.
But I think that's the, I think we're looking at how do, can we be more innovative, right? So bringing the why, for example, the community learning centers to the middle schools. It, it's not, that's not a standard program. That's being innovative, looking at for new ways to engage students. How we were doing things prior to the pandemic weren't necessarily all that great to begin with, right? So here's an opportunity for us to look at how to do things differently. Wrap our whole support around students, right? Our whole work on increasing our Greater Lakes Mental Health partnership, right? Was we need, we know that students need that resource. So how could we make that come alive in our buildings?
Well, I, I guess what struck me, Brian, is that, you know, we have learning standards. You know, and we use that word and now we say, well, we're, we're, we're going to must let go of standardization. So.
That's not true. We, we would keep our, we're going to stick to our standards. That's kind of the focus of the P L Cs as well. Is there are standards. When we talk about inclusionary practices. We also need to think about how do students enter into those standards, so they may not have everything they need. To go at grade level, but we can expose them to the grade level standard and get them to where they need to be. So that's really our focus. Our work for the fall is to bring that piece to our schools. But we're not losing the standard. Our curriculum guides are all written to standards. And that's what we share with new teachers when they come into the district. These are the standards. This is the order of standards you're going to teach, right?
Okay, well.
Instructional materials are instructional materials. They're support. They're meant to help you get that standard across. But we're not leaving the standards by any.
Hopefully, hopefully not, hopefully not. As you can see, when I can read, read this statement, it could be misinterpreted or confusing.
I think there's, I think here we're talking about standardized, standardizing education, right? We have an opportunity to do things different, right? It doesn't need to be cookie cutter.
Okay. I, I, all right. So I, I mean, I, I'm. But I, what, what I've heard from you in the past is, is that you have a curriculum that you follow and you have certain methodologies that you do. You, you, you just don't allow teachers to just go any willy-nilly way.
Nope. First, first second to the, we have our guides for math, reading, science, social studies. Fitness, health.
I, I get all, all of you. When I, when I read this statement. You know, what, what, what do you really mean and what are we really doing? Okay.
You know, another, let me, let me just jump in. Another way to look at that, Paul, is that there may be. A standard way that we measure whether or not a student can understands the standard. Well, personalization might be instead of writing an essay, you do a three D book report, right? You do, you do a project based product that shows that you understand the standard. And again, that's when we look in P L Cs. I might go, you can get the standard. I can tell you, you understand the standard by the way that you answered the questions on this test. But there might be other ways that we can also look at how a student understands the standard, right? Woodshop, you can learn about angles and maybe not be able to do it where you draw it out. But maybe when you actually put your hands on it. So again, project based learning is another way to personalize the learning for students.
Okay, that, that's what you're saying. So now it's clear to me. Thank you so much. If you go to slide sixteen, I think it is.
Moving forward into the fall.
Yes, that's the one. Down under launching multitude system of support. And then the next bullet under that, aligning a data analysis protocol across building. Help me understand, what, what are we doing there?
When we look at some of our behavior data or social emotional data, not all the schools have been looking at it the same way. So we've been working this year about how to review that data. At elementary, how do you review that data at the middle school? And then how do you do that at the high school and how do you act on it? So once you review the data, what are you going to do about it? We haven't had a consistent approach to that. And so that's our, has been our goal this year is to bring that about. Say, hey, we're all going to look and record data around those topics, even in academics in a similar way.
Well, I, I remember I visited a school many years ago now, down at Beechwood. And you know, Megan Eakin was there at that point in time. And that, that principal was pretty interesting with how he looked at his data. You know, they were looking at maps data and some of the other at that point in time. And you know, some, some aha moments happened during that, when they, when they looked at their, their. Because they basically had broken the students into kind of three groups. Those that are, were kind of ahead of the power curve, those that were kind of on, on, on the slope that they should be. And then those that were behind. And so they found that they were spending sometimes more time with those that were behind. But then the people that were ahead dropped backwards. And so I'm interested in how this data is going to help you do that. And you know, I, I kind of thought we were already working data like that.
Um. Yes, I think that we have a number of elementary schools that have M T S S process underway, right? They were early adopters. And so Beechwood being an example of an early adopter. They still are very good at looking at their data. But we had left that up, essentially, I feel like up to choice for schools. And if you notice back on the slide about the annual action plan, saying this is not a choice. Every school is going to be doing this, because it was, the way we had set up the district improvement plan. But so and the school improvement plans is you could choose the strategy that you wanted to work on, right? And we, we, we've changed that. We've now said, these are all the strategies you're working on. Now, how do you go about doing that at your school? And we can support you, right? So we are saying everyone's going to work on M T S S and we will support you on working on M T S S. Versus some would choose to do it and some would choose not to, right? So all that's really saying is we're going to be in alignment across the system.
Okay.
I, I'm, I'm. A little, I need a little help after, because of the, the question here. So the statement was that X amount of time was for maybe underachieving. Then you have on target and then above cheesy, above achieving. And that the insinuation might be that there was an inordinate amount of resources given to those. Who are underachieving. That's what, that's what I thought I heard. And it seemed almost like at the cost of those who might have accelerated learning. So superintendent van, my understanding is that. With the multi-tiered systems that we have in place. You're not forsaking any of the, I mean, and I'm not saying we put them in those exact three categories. But we're not forsaking the needs of any child at any level. We're just making sure that there's a multi-tiered system for support at every level. That's what I'm trying to wonder. Can you comment on that?
Oh, yes. I mean, I, I guess the way I sum that up is, is the fear of a zero-sum game. Which means if you give more to one group, you're taking something away from another group. And so what we're looking at doing is aligning the three tiers across the district to ensure that folks do operate within the guidelines. The, what we call the fence posts of those three tiers. So we do know that when we're applying the concept of equity, that means giving students what they need. And students need something different, but we will not be taking away from other students. Or groups of students or higher performing students. So if I know that I've got students that are in, you know, back then, it was probably listed on a trifold board as a red, yellow and green, right? And so I know that my students that are falling in the red based on their data. They may need, like what Brian said, they may need better access. They, they may not understand the vocabulary. I'm going to give them what they need as the data calls for and as best practices called for. But I also have my quote unquote green students in potentially a high cap program. Or maybe they're operating at a different place in the classroom in their small groups. And so they are getting what they need at the level that they need it. And so again, we want to include, we want to be inclusionary in this process, because we don't want students that are in the red group. Never being exposed to grade level standards, right? Because then they're always kind of fighting for that. So yes, we're going to give kids what they need, but not at the expense of any other student.
So that, that drives a question for me then, Ron, is how, how do you make that happen? You know, if you, if you have one teacher in a classroom and they got X number of students and, and they divide it into thirds. And, and the people that are behind, the teacher has to spend more time with those that are behind. That just, just by looking at that, that information, that teacher isn't going to be spending time with your high end students. So are you going to bring more staff in to do that?
Well, it, it really depends on the circumstances. If I'm the only teacher in the classroom, it might not be given more time, but different time. To the uh students at the different levels. Um, yes, we do have ELL students with ELL needs and we would, we would be looking at bringing staff. Into support them while they're in that uh general ed classroom. Same thing with special education students. When appropriate, I want to make sure I caveat that because some students do need to have specially designed instruction. In a different setting, right? And again, that just depends on their IEP, which is dependent on their evaluation. And so in some cases, it may look like bringing additional staff in. In other cases, it may look like different time within the classroom. And again, that comes down to the PLCs, professional learning communities that Brian talked about earlier, where teachers have designated time. Each week to look at the data and to determine, so what does this group of group need? What do my struggling learners need? Do they need a little bit of extra time or do they just need different time, right? Um, it's, it's not cutting the class into thirds necessarily because my, my top, my students that are in that. Green, they might not need twenty minutes of a sixty-minute class period. But the time that they do get should be again strategic and focused on supporting what their needs are and advancing them so that they can grow as well.
Well, yeah, I, I agree. I, I think you're right on. And so thanks for explaining that. I just know that when I visited Beechwood and again, it must be.
A little while ago.
Eight years ago.
We have best practices evolve over those eight.
Yeah, no, I agree, but it, it was interesting. The principal showed me his data. And he said, you know, it was amazing when he sat down with the teacher, he told me, said, when I sat down with a teacher. And the teacher saw the data said, oh, I've let down my green student. That's basically what she said, you know, was in tears. She was in tears because she said, ah, and so if we're watching that, then we're making sure that we're, we're taking care of every child. That to me is a good thing. So thank you for.
Yeah, and, and that is, you know, eight years ago, we didn't have professional learning communities where teachers were able to come together. And so we've evolved and we do have that. And now we're evolving further to make sure that those professional learning communities. They, they, they're able to focus and we rely on those teachers and their expertise to look at that data with leadership, of course, with. Uh, consulting teachers and the, and the principals as instructional leaders. And we, we trust them um it, as the experts that they are to look at that data and determine what's the best need for students? What's the best form of instruction to provide them with what they need?
Thank you.
Carol.
Ron, uh, uh, thank you very much for clarifying that because this really takes me right back to when WADA. Started their state work on closing the achievement gap. There were so many people who were so concerned that if their child was performing well. Or was in a school of high performers that those who were not performing as well or did not have the same opportunities. They were going to have issue, they, they were going to have time and, and, and monies and things taken away from them. That instead of having high achieving kids continue to achieve. They were going to be left alone so that lower achieving kids could come up equal. Well, that was just the opposite. Actually, it was high achieving kids were to continue to achieve. Lower achieving kids because of the strategies that were put in place, the money that was put in place and the effort and the focus on the PLCs now. It was to bring, it was to, really was to bring all kids up. Um, not to leave anybody behind. And that was a real, that was a WADA initiative. It was very important that people understood that because it was very misunderstood. Um, people were so concerned that their, their school wasn't going to get what they'd always had, when in fact. Other schools needed other, needed more, needed more interventions and we made sure they got them. So I don't think we've ever had. I don't remember ever having. Anyone say, well, these are our higher achievers and they don't, we don't need to work with them because they're going to be fine. No, no, you got to keep, it's always been, we're going to bring everybody up. And that's how the achievement gap closes. Cause if you don't do that. Achievement gap was going to just stay, stay as it was. So, you know, WADA did that and um the, then we see the benefits of that today. Nobody gets left behind. Sorry.
Okay, not seeing any more hands. We will now move forward with district reports and I will ask uh. Equity and inclusion manager Grant Twymann to present um after what is. Almost to the day, uh, six months of work. Grant, if you could present our um. Draft of the equity policy that would be coming before the board for first reading in August.
Yes, sir. And uh, just a second, I'm going to share. Right. Good evening, uh, Dr. Schaefer, Board Director, Superintendent Banner, Council. This presentation is an update to our draft equity policy. And uh, this is our final draft, which is, which is in your inbox. You should have that um tonight. We uh, will just discuss the presentation, kind of our journey here. Why equity? And then I will turn it back over to the superintendent. For this particular uh workshop retreat. Uh, there won't be uh breakout rooms or discussion. And just a reminder, uh, we set out, we set out back on January twenty-third to develop the most collaborative, responsive and organic. District equity policy in Washington State. Uh, the three critical features, again, by way of reminder is that uh the policy be unique and reflective of current equity efforts and initiatives. Be collaborative, co-created with highly impacted diverse stakeholders. And that the policy be uh catalytic, right? It be uh, uh, springboard, right? So it wouldn't signify the end of our work. But uh, for us to continue working, continue making progress uh along our equity journey. Uh, in a context where. Uh, everyone has an opinion on equity and even a select few make a habit of conflating equity with critical race theory, which I can assure you. With extreme confidence that the two concepts, the two terms are completely different. Not to mention critical race theory, it's a graduate level term. It's an academic framework that students learn and are exposed to more in. Uh, universities, right? U- usually uh in grad school. For us, we talk about equity. We emphasize equity. Why? Because equity is the essential aspect of our work that empowers us to serve diverse needs. Eliminate barriers. Specifically eliminate barriers to success and maintain high standards that allows each student to flourish. The power of true equity has the capacity to support each and every student. It accounts for differences with the growth mindset that fosters true community. Uh, the curb cut effect illustrates this principle of equity uh really well. And, and uh, we, we got a chance to watch that video together. Uh, the board and council um about a year ago now. Um, and so. Uh, I ju- just wanted to mention that as, as a point of reference and reminder. On, on the principle of equity by supporting. Uh, people or groups who, who in some cases uh are, are. Uh, pushed to the margins inadvertently or inadvertently or left out or forgotten. By supporting those groups, supporting those students, you actually benefit the whole, right? And so when I, when I hear what, what, what Carol just. Was sharing about the uh. The introduction or discussion on the achievement gap some years ago, right? And, and, and the idea was that it supported everyone. Um, I, I come alive, right? Because that's that principle of equity uh that we, that we're talking about. And so to be clear, right? Equity is not a separate focus for us as a school district, right? It's not something. That's consuming our time. So as to say, we've stopped driving buses, feeding students, we stopped maintaining facilities. We stopped paying wages, we stopped allocating resources, we stopped training teachers, caring for kids. And educating our students and the community of Lakewood. None of these things are true. Equity is the lens. Uh, or I'll say it this way, it's through equity. That we serve and support staff, students and families. And the lens of equity, right, is, is, is really powerful. It's each person is valued. Difference in diversities are celebrated and supported. Different students have different needs. The lens of equity says one size doesn't fit all. Collaboration and collective voice is critical, not to be confused with critical race theory, right? It's, it's essential. Um, and great education, inclusive spaces and equitable access. It's not a zero-sum game. And, and so here I'm kind of echoing. Uh, Superintendent Banner, um, when he says uh, we don't see it as, as wins and losses, right? Um, we see it as a, as an opportunity to meet different needs for different students. Um, so that each st- each student can flourish. Um, and each student can contribute to their community. By way of reminder, when we say diversity, we are speaking about a broad stroke of many differences. Um, and it's not, when we talk about differences, when we talk about uh, when we talk about diversity, uh, when we talk about variation, uh, we're not talking about. Uh, division, right? There's a difference there, right? And so uh, for us, when we talk about diversity and the many differences. We maintain collective voice and preserving identity, right? So race comes up, gender, differences in age, religion. Language, body size, ability. Uh, sexual orientation, family background, right? These are some lenses of difference, right? And, and these are, these are just some, right? A lot of times. Um, when we think diversity, we, our default is uh, uh, just race, right? Or, or just gender. Um, but it's important to remember that when we say diversity, uh, it's a broad stroke of many differences. Uh, when we say equity, um, it's about acquiring, affirming and meeting diverse needs, removing barriers uh to access an organizational success. Uh, eliminating disparities, maintaining high standards and high expectations. So academic rigor. Uh, is a component of equity, right? If we lower our expectations. We are, we're not practicing equity, right? We are not doing education with a lens for equity uh by lowering our standards or lowering our expectations. When we say inclusion, just by way of reminder, uh, essentially we're saying students, staff, families. And the community, and community members feeling seen, heard, welcomed, valued, honored and celebrated. And so here I just wanted to uh. To kind of share a, a really simple, uh, more of a metaphor. On how equity, diversity and inclusion would think in a given scenario. So diversity asks, who's in the room? Equity responds. Who is trying to get in the room but can't? Who's presence in the room is under constant threat of erasure, right? And so remember, we're thinking about a, a lens for equity. Uh, inclusion asks, who's? Has everyone's ideas been heard? Equity responds, whose ideas won't be taken as seriously? Because they aren't in the majority. Diversity asks. How many more of? Uh, fill in the blank, pick any marginalized identity group. How many more uh of this group do we have this year than last year? Equity responds. What conditions have we created that maintain certain groups as a perpetual majority here, right? Uh, so thinking about. Uh, this quote unquote conversation, right? In this metaphor. Equity, diversity and inclusion as concepts, as, as thinking things. Um, it's not to say anyone is greater or lesser than the other, right? It's just the lens by which they enter the conversation. Um, and then this last one here, uh, inclusion asks, is this environment safe for everyone to feel like they belong? Justice responds, who's safety is being sacrificed and minimized to allow others to be comfortable? Maintaining uh dehumanize, dehumanizing views. Uh, 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 an example, um, just, just for, just for context here. Um, a comment that goes Native Americans. Uh, just had a bad immigration policy, right? That like, like that dehumanizing view. Um, isn't consistent or aligned with, with our work around equity, diversity. Uh, and inclusion. So just to kind of give us a, a picture of how, how the lens would show up in a, in a conversation um in terms of. Strategy and organizational growth. Uh, I, I'm a. Want to recall a, a slide. I can't, I can't tell you the slide number that Brian. Brian LaVal presented. On the participation in summer school and uh you see it was proportional, right? Like that, that's worth celebration, right? That's worth an applause because it's, it's through the lens of equity. That we, we do programs, right? We provide support for students. And then you don't see disparities in the outcomes, right? You don't see, or you don't see uh disproportionate. Participation and. And I'd say that's, that's equity at, at its finest right there. Um, here, I just want to remind us of our, our, of our timeline. We've seen this before, I think, I think four times. So, so sorry if it's a, if it's redundant. It, it, it helps keep, keep me on track and for sure, I hope it keeps us all on track. So January twenty-third. Uh, the board initiated equity policy development. And then I just kind of moving down in month, uh, looks like in month two, the board uh was the board review of the first draft. We did that in March. And month four was the board review of the third draft. That would have been in May. And then month five, which is the, the, the month that we're, we're in now, right? And, and give or take some days and some weeks, we present the final draft. Uh, which you all would have received. And then on seventh, we begin the adoption process with the first reading on August ninth. Second reading on. Uh, September thirteenth, which brings us right under an eighth month process. Here's a picture. Um, here's where we are now. And here's a picture of our timeline. Um. Probably one of my favorite slides. Uh, so we're looking at about an eight-month process to report review, seven stakeholder groups. And fourteen stakeholder meetings. And then just as a reminder here, where the board initial elements for developing the equity policy. And so as you all uh came up with these on January twenty-third after reviewing. Um, equity policies from around the region, uh, we set out to um create a policy around these, these topics. And uh stakeholder groups here was, here was the makeup um in terms of uh eighty-three plus stakeholders included students. Families. Classroom educators, district staff, uh, a focus group from ALT, uh administrators. And then representatives from various community organizations, nonprofits. And uh, and then even uh formal agencies like West Pierce Fire. Lakewood Police Department, Pierce College, Glover Park Tech, City of Lakewood, Girl Scouts of Western Washington. Uh, where some of the um uh agencies within the city. That participated as stakeholders, given input on our equity policy. Which uh, which brings me a, a ton of excitement to see this level of collaboration. It for sure was one of our critical features going into this. And then here over the next few slides, you'll see where we did a crosswalk for the board initial elements and just kind of, kind of pointed and highlighted where they show up in the policy. Um, and I'm, and I'm happy to report that. Every one of the board elements that was identified on January twenty-third landed in our policy. And then the last one we have here is the uh, the glossary of terms. Superintendent Banner, as I close out, um, final things that, that I have for us today is uh, just a reminder that equity is not. A separate focus from our core mission as a school district. Uh, equity is the lens by which we do all of our work. To support all of our students. And so that concludes my presentation for tonight.
Thanks, Grant. If you could bring the screen down and then we can see if any directors have any questions for you or us.
I would not um. Necessarily just say questions. Uh, Grant, I just want to acknowledge. That you took the direction of the board. And you um. Put a lot of effort in to move this initiative forward. At a, you know, at a really great pace. It wasn't so fast that people weren't involved. Just to look at that timeline. And all the stakeholders, uh, you know, I just feel like it was really impressive and I just want to acknowledge. That whenever you do anything that's kind of organic. And systemic at the same time, then it's, it's very complicated. So. Really proud of our work. Thank you.
That's smart. Um, and then uh, Paul, I can't tell if you put your hand up or if it was still up from the last one, but uh. Paul.
Glad you saw that. It's up.
Okay.
Page six, slide six. You, you use the term systemic barriers. Can you give me some examples, please? You're muted.
Yeah, I, I don't have the printed version you have, so I'm uh, I'm just going through the slides to, to catch where uh.
Your slide six.
Okay, here we go. Yeah, good question. So systemic barriers are, are any, any times? When us, okay, so there are always nuances and one-offs and anomalies, right? And a particular data, a particular outcome, particular uh representation, right? Proportionality. Uh, a situation can be classified as systemic. When it's a year after year. Um, different students, different families, uh, but the same, same. um different students, different families, uh but the same same data, right? Same outcome, same uh uh same representation, right? So that's when something is uh is systemic. So so for us, um when we when we're talking about equity and we're looking at data, when it's the same report year after year, we want to look at that with an equity lens, right? Is there something systemic happening that we need to uh remove? Right? That needs to be adjusted, that needs to change.
You're working on this. What? Tell me an example of systemic.
Yeah, so a a good example could be uh discipline, um the discipline data. A a good example could be um uh our our staff makeup around the district. A a good one could be academic uh achievement data. Um you could look at a uh AP participation uh representation. Um if we were doing summer school every year, the way we were doing, we'd want to look at that data. And if we saw a year after year, uh certain groups of students not participating, like say military students, um we'd we'd want to see if that's a systemic issue, right? Is there something that we're doing in our practice that is uh causing military students to to not uh um attend uh summer school? Or is there something going on in the military where they're not attending summer school, right? And so that those would be some examples of uh.
Do we have any of those?
Yes, sir.
We do. Tell me about it.
So the data in terms of discipline, academics, um AP enrollment, all of that data is something that we have every single year, and also it's it's part of state OSPI report card, so it's actually public. Um and there are disparities, there is disproportionality in our data year after year. And so we do have some systemic systemic issues that we for sure need to approach with an equity lens. Or else perpetuate systemic issues.
Is language, Grant, you know, for a person that's looking for a real simple area of a systemic barrier, let's say that we talked earlier about ELL and Superintendent Banner said, you know, maybe a a person has to come in because of the language barrier. Something to that effect. If you don't bring that person in and yet you still expect the same results from people who are wrestling with a second language, that would be a systemic barrier. The way you overcome that barrier is by providing a multi uh systems approach to being able to bring somebody in to help with language. And that changes the systemic way that we interact with ELL students. I mean, it it isn't even found in those types of systems. I'm just asking.
Um for sure. And one of the things um that the the state has done considerable work on, um state board WASDA um around discipline in terms of exclusionary discipline practices, right? Because they they saw year after year where specifically students of color or or students with disability were excluded disproportionately, right? Compared to their peers. And so there were policies, right? They came out because of an equity lens applied to uh reviewing those data points. Um a policy came out that changed how uh we do exclusionary discipline, and this was statewide. Um so for sure, relevant to to not just the policy, but overall how we do, how we operate as an organization in terms of equity.
They, that's other districts. So have you looked at our district? Are we doing that?
Yes, sir.
We are. Okay, give me an example.
So we we consistently, year after year, uh discipline our black and Hispanic and Pacific Islander students more than um more than their peers. Year after year, we do that from kindergarten up to twelfth grade.
So we're we're disciplined, and maybe they're misbehaving. Should they be disciplined?
Well, well, here's the thing, Paul. Um if if it's, if it's, again, if it's year after year, uh different students, different families, right? But the same uh data points, right? The same disproportionality. Then we're probably talking about something systemic, right? So then we have to look in a mirror to say, what are we doing, right? Could we be contributing to this? Or are these are these students, uh these black and Hispanic students prone to misbehaving, right? And if that's the case, then then we're having a completely different conversation, right? And so what we're seeing is year after year, same data points. And so we have to say, is this systemic? Let's look in the mirror. Are we contributing to this? That's that's what the work of equity leads us to do. Or we just point the finger and blame those students or blame those families year after year.
Well, you could, you could, because they may be living by a different set of rules than the whole community has.
Well, 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 again, if we're talking about equity, diversity, and inclusion, it um who who's setting the rules, right?
That's a great question. Who is setting the rules?
Well, 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 which rules specifically around discipline?
Well, first off, the policy, the policy in this district is set by this board. So you got to help us understand this. If we have to put policies in place, if we got a problem, let us know what the problem is so we can set rules that make sense. So help me understand that.
I think I think that's great, right? If if that's the approach. And so when we look at disciplines specifically, we see disproportionality on uh discipline, discipline points that are quote unquote subjective, right? Like uh disruptive or non-compliant, right? Those those things, right? So you talk about rules, right? Like, well, well, that's a, that's a a discipline category that's highly subjective. So who decides when something is disruptive? How do you apply non-compliant to one person but not to another person, right? And so we're talking about some complexity here that uh that isn't just, I make the rules, you follow them. Uh it it's a lot more complex than that. When we're talking about a community, when we're talking about leading, it's not about just making the rules and people following. Leading in community is about relationships. And so so there's there's a lot more work to be done in terms of how do we get our minds around what's happening discipline-wise?
Well, you know, our our parents, our parents are sending children to school so that they get an education. And so if somebody's being disruptive in the classroom so that the other children can't learn, that's a problem. So how do we deal with that?
Yeah, well, that that's not the question that I that I can deal with right now.
Well, you're what you're talking about discipline. You're saying it's disproportionate. So we have children that come into classrooms that are disruptive. So what's the definition of disruptive?
That's a good question, Paul. And like you said, who's creating the rules? Right now, there's five board members that create the rules for this district. And up until this past year, uh you know, we've gotten a board director who is of a black and brown ethnicity. Um so we've had pretty much a mono uh 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 a singular look at potentially those rules. And so equity is not a equity is about examining those rules and determining, is there something there? You might examine the rules and determine there is not something there. But truthfully, if you, and again, let's talk about year after year after year is what Grant indicated. So when you see something systemic, it's something that happens year after year after year. So you do have to look at, if we had a curve on the freeway and we had accidents on that thing year after year after year, well, we have to determine, is that curve on the freeway? Does it have the right bank? Does it have our pitch going around? Is it too sharp? Or are we saying that everyone in those accidents is just a bad driver? But we have to ask the questions, and that's what equity is, is examining the questions.
Ron, I don't have any problem asking the question, but I I'm what what I need to know is, you know, all we're doing is saying, well, out there in this big world, there's some problems. Okay, I got that. But our question here is what's happening in our district? That's what our parents want to know. If we've got an issue in our district, what is that? What is it? What is our data from Fuller Park District? What does that data say? Okay, let's look at that data. Then we can make a policy if we need to to fix that. But I I haven't seen that at this point in time. All I have is these generalized stuff. I haven't seen specific data to support that position. That's a problem for me. Anyhow, we can leave that question. How about the next question? How about on slide eight? You um you use the term marginalized. Who's who's the marginalized identities? Who are they? Do we have some? Do we have examples of that?
Yeah, so when we talk about marginalized identity, uh most of the time, we're talking about um folks whose identities have been traditionally marginalized, right? Have been uh traditionally left out of either mainstream society in a in a number of different ways, right? And so so in this case, uh we could be talking about uh black people, we could be talking about people who speak a language other than English, we could be talking about Native Americans, we could be talking about uh uh people with different uh different abilities. Uh we could be talking about people from the LGBTQ community. Um so so tho- those are some example of examples of uh historically or traditionally marginalized identities.
Wait, you you said, Grant, you just said could be, could be. Do you have some specifics where that's happened in Clover Park School District?
Um well, we we just talked about disparities, right? Or disproportionality and discipline data. Um and it's, it happens on the lines of folks whose identities have been traditionally marginalized. Um which which again is uh people who are black, Hispanic, Pacific Islander, different abilities. Um so an example in the Clover Park School District would be would be discipline data.
Okay, so we're back to discipline. So we're back to the same. So people that are disciplined are marginalized in our district. That's what you're telling me.
What what I'm saying is, our discipline data shows disparities and disproportionality. That if you're a person that comes from a historically marginalized identity, you are likely to be dis- the data shows you are disciplined more than your peers. That's that, that's what we've been saying. And if you look at, if you look at another metric, if you look at uh academic achievement, right? Depends on the depends on the school. But people whose identities have been historically marginalized, underachieve than their peers compared to their peers. There's disproportionality there. If you look at staff makeup, the makeup of our staff across the district, and you compare that to our students, there's disproportionality. Um.
So what what are you suggesting, Grant? Then we need to get rid of a bunch of our teachers and make sure that they're replaced with people of color?
I'm I'm just gonna jump in. I'm gonna jump in. Let me jump in. Paul, that's a, that's a question that you're trying to plant words into Grant's mouth, and he didn't say that. And so I'm gonna say that any other questions, you can pose them to me and we'll we'll work together to try to get your responses because that's almost bordering. And I would just come back to you, President Schaefer. The line of questioning, it's not even about the words, but there's a tone to the questioning that from my perspective is inappropriate and aggressive towards my staff member.
And um Ron, I I do apologize. Uh it does feel like uh an interrogation instead of a collaborative problem-solving question. So I can appreciate that. And while I'm not sure of Paul's intent, I am looking at and appreciative of the potential impact. And so I also noticed that one of our uh board policies is to make sure that we give everybody equal time. And I noticed that, you know, there's other board members that want to have time to ask questions as well. Um I think in being very fair to some of the uh specific questions that Paul asked, you know, is there disparity? Are there marginalized people? I I want to just make sure that we recognize, that the board recognizes that, yes, there are. There are marginalized people. We're aware of it. We see it in the signs behind our uh profiles right now on Superintendent Banner, myself. Are there uh disparities that are specific? Uh our EDI director made that very clear as well, that there are in shared those areas. So uh I I think I think Paul's questions have been answered in those specific areas as far as the results of what it's supposed to look like in terms of staffing and those things. That's certainly a question that the board would want to get to you, Superintendent Banner, not to uh uh Grant in this case. I can appreciate the question there. Then I want to also just make sure that the other board directors have a chance to weigh in. Alyssa, your hand's been up forever, so I'm I'm just gonna uh make sure that we give you a chance to.
Well, thank you. Uh so first of all, um Grant, I just want to say thank you for explaining, I guess, everyone, the difference between critical race theory and uh equity and diversity. Mostly because, as you know, school boards across the country have come under attack over it. You know, all of a sudden, I'm pro critical race theory, uh you know, and people are telling me what I think, you know, I'm sure other people. And all of a sudden, it's become this wild debate that really isn't accurate. But here we are, um defending ourselves the best that we can. Uh but I I think that it's important that to note that there isn't a simple answer to all of these questions. And I think that that has been made very clear. It's a very hot topic. People can get very passionate about it. But I do think it's important to remain respectful and kind during the process. Cause you know, starting to shout at people and raise voices, that's not gonna get anywhere. Everyone in this country, everyone in our school district is trying to come up with a plan that meets all needs. That's where what I've heard, every board member wants what's best for all students. We're trying to get there. And is it necessarily going to be perfect? No. Is it going to be a learning process and it, you know, changes down the road? Yes, everyone is working on this. If someone had the perfect answer, I think everyone would be running to that solution if I'm not mistaken. But I just wanted to say that I appreciate you addressing critical race theory head-on because obviously, you know, we kind of come under attack for that. So I just want to say thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you for your words, Alyssa. Um I I I know, I know what it feels like. I I remember uh getting phone calls and emails of why we were teaching third graders critical race theory. And I was like, wow, um that that would be interesting. Um that that that's a graduate level level work. So thanks, Alyssa. Um other questions? Um looking to see if I see hands. Uh Anthony.
All right, actually, thank you, Grant, so much. Uh great presentation. Uh Alyssa, thank you for for going over that. Also, I think you pointed out some amazing topics. I just wanted to point out too, I don't, I'm I'm so thankful that this is uh coming to surface uh more and more. These are great conversations to have, great questions as well. Uh I think Paul, you know, those are great as, you know, they're 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 there, they have meaning to it. And I think a lot of people do have those questions. So it's good to, let's get these out, let's figure out these solutions as well so that everybody can realize that this is going to be an ongoing process. And and I think it's not going to ever have a a full endpoint, uh because there's always room for improvement. And and for us to really look and dive in of of how we can always continually be better with our systems, with the way that we train and and teach and and lead the community. So so thi- this is all excellent. Um and and once again, I just got to reiterate that I believe truly this is a uh, this is longevity. So so we're gonna continue this path and make strides and really perfecting what we're trying to get to. So so thank you.
Thanks, Anthony. I'm scanning the room, seeing if there are other hands. Superintendent Banner, Dr. Schaefer, not seeing any. I'll toss it back to you, sir.
All right. Thank you, Grant. Um just to conclude this particular uh report, what you heard tonight was um the report that indicates that the task that the district was set upon on January twenty-third and the elements that the the board and council came up with are encompassed within the document um as it went through the multiple stages and iterations with stakeholder input. And so uh as uh Grant indicated from our initial uh task, this this document and policy is not an end-all. As I also just heard from several board directors, it is a springboard for the work that is to come to help guide the work, just like all policy does. Um so I appreciate your attention to this, and we will be presenting in August for first reading. And that being said, I will move to my portion of tonight's reports, which is where I will walk through the operational infrastructure evaluation of the superintendent document. Um you all should have received that document today via email. Um it was not in your Friday packet because I was working on it all the way up until today, um through the weekend and to today. So um this will take you through each of the categories, not necessarily reading each word in the category. I will pause at the end of each category um to determine if you have any questions of me around that particular category.
Superintendent Superintendent Banner. Superintendent, Superintendent Banner, I'm, I'm wondering, we're an hour and a half, a little bit more into it.
Good point.
You know, I'm thinking that maybe if we just took a seven-minute bio refresh break, it would be a little bit more attentive for your important reports on the uh next one. So uh, if it's uh agreeable to everybody, it is six thirty-seven, we'll come back in, in seven minutes. Um, and be ready and very attentive to hear the next report from our superintendent. So, Terry, can we just pause for seven minutes for a uh, a bio refresh break, please? Paul, there we go. We'll give you about ten seconds, Superintendent Banner, and we'll be ready. Go ahead when you are.
All right, so at the risk of being redundant, I will just give a little bit more of the same intro. This uh next report will review several of the qualities, or, or excuse me, of the uh categories. Of the operational infrastructure evaluation of the superintendent, which is how the board then comes together to evaluate my performance. In a given year, and so I will go through each of the categories and then pause for uh questions at the end of each category. I'll try not to read every single word on my page, but they are great words, so. The first category is personal qualities. And under personal qualities, there are five subcategories, demonstrates ability to work well with individuals and groups. Exercises good judgment and democratic processes in arriving at decisions. Uses language effectively in dealing with students, staff members, board, and the public. Speaks well in front of large and small groups, expressing ideas in a logical and forthright manner. And thinks well on his or her feet when faced with an unexpected or disturbing turn of events in large group, in a large group meeting. So I will say that I have displayed the ability to address stakeholders, students, families, staff, and community effectively. In a straightforward manner to both celebrate and inform through. Um, examples given here are the Superintendent Youth Advisory Coalition and other stakeholder groups. Uh, my weekly video to staff, students, and the community, our Parent Connections Council, board meetings. Meetings with local and state legislators to include the city council, uh monthly meeting with the city manager. Uh, various staff meetings, um, our administrative leadership team, our retirement events. Arlington Project, Staff Appreciation Event, uh various other community meetings. Uh, Lakewood's Promise, sitting on that board, Kiwanis presentations to them, as well as Rotary. Uh, quarterly meetings with the JBLM uh Garrison Commander. I effectively addressed our community at all five graduation ceremonies. This was an in-person audience of up to two thousand, our audiences were up to two thousand participants, depending on the school. Uh, some smaller, um, and they were also live streamed, which included those audience sizes. And I've displayed the ability to respond to unexpected events with leadership and poise through kind of a cycle of. You know, reacting when you have to react in, in terms of the initial reaction, and then um having that morph into a response. And then a recovery, and that's indicative of the COVID situation that we have been in since uh March of twenty twenty. Uh, we started with kind of a reaction, we uh came together and built a response, and now we're moving into a recovery phase. And to keep that category simple, I will end on personal qualities and ask if there are any questions that the board may have of me at this time. Regarding personal qualities. Trying to give my appropriate educator wait time, although it's been a while since I've been in the classroom, I see no hands, so I will move forward. And the next category is relationship with the board, and the five areas under this category are. Keeps the board informed on issues, needs, and operation of the school system. And offers professional advice to board on matters required, requiring board action with recommendations based on appropriate study and analysis. Interprets and executes the intent of board policy and priorities. Supports board policy and priorities to the public and to staff. Accepts responsibility for maintaining liaison between the board and personnel. Goes immediately and directly to the board when he or she feels an honest, objective difference of opinion exists between him and/or any. Or all of the board directors in an earnest effort to resolve such difference immediately. So I continue to keep the board informed in a timely manner of relevant events and facts. I do this through weekly board briefs, special briefings as needed, individual inquiries as appropriate. Reports to the board at regular and workshop meetings and in executive sessions as needed. When there were questions respect, with respect to policy and procedure, I have presented my perspective and supported it with policy language. I continue to look to the one voice of the board to support my work and my action steps. Both as the secretary of the board and as the superintendent and CEO of the school district. Any questions from the board with regard to relationships with the board?
And Superintendent Banner, I'm, I'm stating this uh not for you nor the board, but just so that the public's aware. That we've done several evaluations, we know the processes. If we did have uh specific questions, we would feel great about asking you those for clarification. The fact that we're not, is not indicative of the way that we feel one way or the other, is that. We have a pretty solid understanding of how you've landed in that area. So I don't want you to interpret our lack of, you know, and of course you might start asking a bunch of questions, who knows? But our lack of question as, asking is anything other than, i- it may be that we're just in full agreement. And we know that we're gonna be able to have opportunities to discuss these things for the next executive session as well, so.
Certainly, certainly. Thank you for that clarity. The next category is parent-community relationships. And the three subgroup categories are, is visible in community life and affairs. Works effectively with public and private agencies, communicates effectively with parents' community regarding student achievement. Educational vision and overall organizational health. So the district has maintained strong community partnerships with Joint Base Lewis McCord, the city of Lakewood, and our local community organizations. Recently, the Lakewood Rotary Educator Student of the Month Program was relaunched this past spring after a hiatus, again due to COVID. Community partners continued to be supportive in meal distribution during our breaks from school. And I remain connected to our local, state, and federal legislators to support the district's interests at all levels of legislation. Again citing the city of Lakewood, um and having worked with Mayor Don Anderson, as well as other council members as appropriate. And monthly meetings with the city manager, John Coffield. Quarterly meetings with Joint Base Lewis uh Garrison Commander Colonel Sky Duncan. Several meetings through the legislative sessions and process with our twenty-eighth district representatives. Levitt and Branowski, as well as Senator Twana Nobles. Um, and the twenty-ninth district Melanie Morgan, and forging a new relationship with our recently elected Congresswoman from the tenth district. Uh, Marilyn Strickland. Weekly video messaging has been an intentional and strategic way to support my ongoing visibility and communication during the pandemic. Presenting to the graduates of all five of the high school programs was an intentional and strategic action on my part. Um, it was a way to be visible to parents and community after a long drought of in-person opportunities due to the pandemic. And I say it was intentional for all five, because a lot of times the superintendent may do the two larger high schools. And then maybe a deputy or an assistant superintendent might do some of the others. And in conversation uh this year with my council, uh it was very strategic action that I do all five of them. Again, to reemphasize and relaunch that visibility for when we were able to do those in-person cer- uh ceremonies. Our Parent Connection Council, the district continues to reach out to parents four times a year for the purpose of both informing and receiving feedback. Through the Parent Connections Council members. This year, our attendance data continues to show positive results. We had seventy-four percent or seventeen of our schools who had a parent present at all four of our meetings. Uh, we had eighty-seven percent or twenty of our schools that had a parent present at three or more of the meetings. We did have two schools that were only able to have a parent there at half of the meetings, and one school had a parent there at only one meeting. Uh, note that there were discussions with each of our schools that did not have one hundred percent, because we are um pushing for and expecting one hundred percent. Um, and even with the technical difficulties that came up and some other issues that were cited around babysitting, et cetera. Each principal is understanding of the importance of this communication strategy and dedicated to working for their parent representatives. To support one hundred percent attendance moving forward. With regard to equity and inclusion and community engagement during the twenty twenty-one school year. One of our focus points was work at building the capacity within our staff at all levels to continue making progress along our equity journey. We have made significant progress around the nature of student voice, community collaboration, and staff professional development. The district continues on its journey. The equity and inclusion efforts in the area of family and community enables Clover Park School District to strengthen, expand, and deepen partnerships. To support student success and student engagement. With several new um collaborative efforts this year with our parents and community, one was the Latinx Evening Nights. The city of Lakewood, Dr. Martin Luther King Celebration, which is an annual event for us. Um, we partnered around Black History Month with the city, the Lakewood Multicultural Coalition. Uh, we partnered with them in an ongoing way. The twenty twenty-one mural project. This project is a multi-agency effort to partner with students to elevate voice and showcase collaboration throughout the community of Lakewood. Clover Park School District is leading the project with sponsorship from the Lakewood Multicultural Coalition, the city of Lakewood. And Clover Park Technical College and its Pierce College as well. Um, we hired a local artist, the four or five of us came together to fund hiring a local artist. That worked with ten of our Clover Park School District students, and I do look forward this fall to the unveiling of that mural, which will be a traveling mural. Um, and it will start uh its first location will be here in Clover Park, I believe at Clover Park High School. We had several equity policy stakeholder sessions, as well as several curriculum stakeholder sessions. And our Lockburn Middle School Input Panel, uh where we brought community members together to support giving us feedback on the candidates. For the new principal at Lockburn Middle School. And then our Give Six Initiative, Phase Two of that is with parents and family. Uh, so Give Six Phase Two was co-designed and created with Lakewood's Choice to support the equity. Uh, excuse me, to support equity uh parents, families, and adults in the home of students to see them, hear them, and value them. Students inspired the creation of the Phase Two uh initiative with the parents, and the whole community will benefit from this work. As it's done through this initia- initiative. This work has resulted in a collective connectedness among community members, nonprofit agencies, government agencies. The equity and inclusion work validated the district in the eyes of critical stakeholders and families. District-wide pride is reverberating throughout classrooms, schools, homes, and community partners. And what you'll also see in the document that I sent you in, where you see text in green. It's simply a reference to an excerpt from the policy that you had us create. That is aligned with these areas that I'm citing. Any questions on that last segment? Okay, staff and personnel relationships. There are six subcategories here, and regarding number one and number six. Number one is develops and executes sound personnel procedures and practices. Number six is hold staff accountable to clear expectations and outcomes. So I've kind of coupled those two together. Um, and so my work here around one and six, all personnel actions are made within the parameters of state law. Board policy and collective bargaining agreements. I'm clear with my expectations and outcomes, and I hold all staff, including myself, progressively accountable. Allowing mistakes to be learning opportunities. With regard to sub-bullet four, which reads, recruit and assign diverse personnel with the appropriate competencies. Diversify the workforce to reflect student demographics. One hundred percent of my hires to the administrative leadership team positions this spring have been highly qualified candidates of color. The Director of Maintenance and Operations, the Principal of Lockburn Middle School, and the Assistant Principal opening at Lakes High School. Also, as of Friday, June twenty-fifth, which was this past Friday, I looked at the data, and since being hired as the superintendent. Um, this data shows that my hires and promotions to the administrative leadership team positions, which is assistant principals, principals, directors. And council-level administrators has been forty percent highly qualified staff of color, which is eight out of twenty hires since becoming the superintendent. Regarding sub-bullet five, which reads, retain essential staff with emphasis on essential staff of color. Create culturally responsive environments to retain essential staff. Regarding that, the following have been a direct support to retention of essential staff. With an emphasis on essential staff of color and creating culturally responsive environments to retain these essential staff. Ongoing professional development over the past two years for all staff with respect to the equity journey. January twenty twenty-one, board-approved Declaration of Equity Diversity and Inclusion. January twenty twenty-one, board consensus directing the superintendent to pursue equity and inclusion policy development. Possible future advisory session feedback, uh feedback sessions with staff of color to determine what staff look for. With respect to a district-level support system that would create a culturally responsive environment as described in item number five above. Again, you'll see a green excerpt from the equity policy, which again just shows the alignment of the work. With the elements that you as a board uh put us to task on with regard to policy development. Regarding number two and three from this, I've. Number two reads, treat personnel fairly without favoritism or discrimination. While insisting on performance of duties and using good evaluation process practices. Number three reads, delegates authority to administrative personnel appropriate to the position each holds. So delegation of authority and responsibility as appropriate is a standard of my leadership style. I ensure that my team understands their role and responsibilities in our district mission and vision, and give them permission to carry out their work. I work to support their growth and build their capacity to do so with a balance of coaching and accountability. And I ask them to do the same of me in terms of coaching and accountability. Relationships with staff must always be a balance of coaching and accountability and relevant to the given situation or moment in time. I maintain a clinical and sterile approach to accountability, providing fair and objective leadership to all situations. Throughout all moments in leadership, especially in the midst of a crisis, we must maintain high standards while also celebrating the hard work of our team members. And their, and other stakeholders. It is the work of the team, and I put team in all caps, that yields success. My team is every person in this district, students, parents, community partners, the school board, all staff, and all administrators. I reaffirm simply that we are better together. Any questions around relationships with personnel? Okay, the next category is educational leadership, and these subcategories or subbullets read. Understands and keeps informed and keeps informed regarding significant aspects of the instructional program. implements the district's work plan and board priorities. Clearly communicates educational vision for the district and the alignment of the personnel and structural components that empower the vision. Aligns administrative team around educational vision and ensures accurate data retrieval systems are functional. And used in addressing student achievement. I begin with student engagement. Because of the disruption to the learning environment due to the COVID pandemic, the district launched engagement teams to develop and implement strategies. To increase engagement with students, whether they were learning virtually or in person. Many strategies proved highly effective as both elementary and secondary schools maintained an average of eighty-five to ninety percent attendance. Or engagement uh rate. The strategies were deemed highly effective, and we will be using some of those strategies in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year to um. And motivate students to be here and be engaged. There's a document also attached to the packet that I sent today that just outlines and shows some of the strategies that were used during the year. Parent-teacher conferences, all grade levels showed growth from the previous year in conference participation. Elementary grew two percent from ninety-three to ninety-five percent. Middle school grew four percent from eighty-five percent to eighty-nine percent. And high school grew three percent from eighty-two percent to eighty-five percent. Schools provided makeup conference times with families, or counselors made calls to share the students' progress and offer support. The goal was one hundred percent of our families to have a conference or a call to understand how their students were progressing. We learned that a hybrid approach of either conferencing virtually or in person may work again for us next year. And we, we do strive consistently to make sure that one hundred percent of our families are engaged in understanding where their students are. Um, so that we can be partners in those, in those students' education. The next several years will be a phase of educational recovery from the COVID nineteen impact. Our board approved a COVID recovery plan and that plan has been approved by OSPI. And it allows for access to the district's ESER and ARPA federal stimulus funding. The district will be partnering with several agencies to support our recovery efforts. The earlier report tonight by Deputy Superintendent La Ba has outlined our efforts that have started with our summer learning academies. The State Superintendent of Public Instruction postponed state testing grades three through eight, ten and eleven until the fall of two thousand twenty-one. This includes ELA math and science tests. Students served in special education will continue to complete their WAAM assessment. And students served in ELL will continue to complete their ALPA twenty-one assessment. And we as a district will continue to use assessment data to determine our students' needs and provide appropriate instructional support to them. The district maintains a focus on our board-supported four pillars of student success, lifelong learning, collaboration, character and leadership. In order to support growth outcomes in attendance, behavior and course completion. The expectations for student success through incremental growth is evidenced in the school, in, in the goals of our district improvement plan. And our school annual action plans. Just as I always like to make a note when we're shifting language, school annual action plans, same as school improvement plans. In order to support instruction in the classroom, at the classroom level, the district continues interim assessments throughout the school year. Providing ongoing professional development in all curriculum areas, providing best new teacher mentor support. And when I say best, that is an acronym for Beginning Educator Support Team. And also providing intentional and regularly scheduled time for teachers to meet in professional learning communities. And you heard a lot about this through Brian's, uh, presentation earlier. Our instructional council at the district level, this council meets weekly throughout the year. This team monitors district instructional data. They advise the superintendent regarding instructional needs and decisions at all levels. And they plan and support professional training for instructional staff and programs. The district has established school-wide systems and parameters expected at each site. In order to provide continuity of instructional practices and supports for all students. While also giving latitude for each school to create strategies within these systems that are specific to their student and, and site data. These systems include, and some of them are repetitive and we are providing the, what I call the goalposts here. So we have the continuity. So the systems will include, and you have this packet as a draft in your document as well. Because we, we've rolled this out, but we haven't implemented it. It will be implemented in the fall. So again, those systems are site council, instructional leadership teams, equity teams. Multi-tiered systems of support to include student of concern processes. Professional learning communities and site-based committees that are focused on the annual action plan and the three goals within that plan. Goal one being the academic goal, goal two being family engagement and goal three being the school climate or social emotional learning goals. The district also recognizes several individual sites experiencing challenges in student performance data. We have provided additional instructional resources to support the student achievement at these sites by strengthening classroom instruction. These resources will be a full-time dean of students to relieve the building administrator of the day-to-day management duties. Allowing more time to be focused by that administrator on the instructional leadership within the school and with teachers. Full-time math, ELA and ELL consultant teachers. Who will coach and support teacher instruction within their given content expertise. And again, you will see a reference from the excerpt of, or an excerpt from the draft equity policy. Again, just to show the crosswalk of this work to the work that you tasked us with. Any questions from the board on instructional or educational leadership? The final category to review is business and finance. And the subbullets here read keeps informed and evaluates the financial needs of the schools, departments and programs within the district. Plant, facilities, equipment and supplies. Provides financial operation, operation oversight insisting on competent and effective performance. Determines that funds are spent wisely and adequate control and accounting are maintained. Gives sufficient attention to long-term financial stability to the school district. Gives good leadership to the allocation of district resources governed by equity. Versus equality. The fiscal stewardship of the district has been positive this year. The pandemic could have resulted in difficult financial situations. Many signs pointed towards two thousand twenty-one being a difficult economic year. Because of these economic warning signs, the district made strong efforts to curb spending. This, along with other savings, resulted in a fund balance that can be used to offset the effects of the pandemic. As well as continuing to support schools. Our financial position has also been aided by various other funding sources related to COVID nineteen. Whether it be local donations or federal, state and county grants. Particularly the federal government has provided COVID nineteen relief funds, often referred to as ESER. To help address issues that have occurred dating back to the beginning of the pandemic. These one-time funds are being used to address costs for student well-being, student learning recovery, health and safety. Technology and other support services. Furthermore, this funding will help the district offset losses for enrollment, student nutrition and pupil transportation costs. In the spring of two thousand twenty-one, the state legislature also provided funding to further offset the loss of pupil trans- transportation program. Planning for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year has been ongoing. As discussed during the budget report that you heard tonight, our conservative spending actions during the two thousand twenty-one year. Will be favorable for next year's beginning fund balance. The district will meet the six percent budget reserve as required by the board. While the district currently has a positive financial position, expenditures are projected to marginally exceed our revenues next year. This highlights our continued need for funding stability through federal, state and local levy dollars. Our capital projects fund is a, has a healthy balance that can be addressed. Excuse me, that can address facility and infrastructure requirements. We also received substantial completion on Thomas Middle School. The district has been proactive in assessing our capital needs. Our facility condition assessment surveyed eighty facilities at twenty-seven sites. With just under two hundred million square feet. The assessment purpose aids in prioritizing and organizing capital facility needs. Clover Park School District staff will share recommendations with the Facility Advisory Committee in the fall of two thousand twenty-one. And if there are no questions around that last category, that does complete my report on the operational infrastructure evaluation. Oh, I do see a hand.
You sent that, I, I don't have that in my personal email and I don't, I can't get into a district email, so I don't know. When did you send that document?
Uh, it was sent today. Terry could give the time. I believe we sent it to both personal and to, uh, work emails.
Yeah, I don't have a work email at this present time, unfortunately, and my personal email does not have it, so I, I still haven't received that document. Thank you.
We will double check the personal email address and get that out and Paul, if I don't, if we don't feel like that's gonna work, I will have it. Hand delivered to you in the morning.
Hey, Paul, I don't know if you want to say this, you know, out loud, but I can see that you, I can see everyone that it was sent to. And it looks like it was sent to your personal email, so maybe it got like hit in your spam folder just by chance or something.
Well, I'm, I'll look. I've been looking, but I haven't found it, so.
I know, yeah, it was sent, it came through at three twenty-five.
Well, if you don't see that or can't find it, all you need to do is text me or give me a call and we will print the packet and we'll get it delivered to you. As long as you're not out on a job in Bonnie Lake or something.
Well, I can, I can stop by the district at some point in time and pick it up.
I would share that, um, whether we are looking at the words that are on the paper. We've done the evaluations, we know the form, we're still able to be able to have the conversations. Your responses to each section, Ron is very helpful, you read the points. And so thank you for, uh, sharing in such a way that, uh, anyone that is even watching tonight would be able to tell exactly what we're evaluating. And then your responses to each, uh, section of it as well. And so because some of us do have it as we go into executive session to have, uh, for the comments. Uh, it will be available for us if we need to circle back and see, uh, the actual words on the document. At this point, we have the, uh, was there, were there any other questions? Uh, for Superintendent Banner in terms of. His report on the operational instructional evaluation. I'm not seeing any, I'd like for us to, uh, then move to the reports from the board. And in one of the areas that we had worked on and have, uh, wanted to bring some resolution to was. The procedure of naming, uh, facilities or schools, so I'm going to ask, um, Alyssa, you and Carol worked on that. Alyssa, would you be willing to bring us up to date with the report and the naming procedure? You're on, you're on mute right now, so I'd encourage, like, no.
Yes, encourage me to get off. But we're all melting over here, so it's a nightmare. I'm glistening anyways, I'm gonna come out here. Um, so Carol and I had worked on the naming. Of the facilities, um, update of the policy, sorry, and. And one of the concerns that had come up was sometimes when you name something. Recent events take place, uh, and it might sway. The naming of the building, so a lot of organizations have in place a time period that has to. Go by before they'll name, uh, something after someone, so like a death, for example. If someone dies, sometimes there's, you know, maybe a media frenzy or, you know, people usually have really good feelings about someone. Right when they pass away, but then, so you name something after them. And then time goes on a little bit later and maybe things aren't so great, different things come to the plate. So we included two different, um. Two different options and, you know, we're not voting on anything, it's just more of a kind of a feedback at this point, I guess you could say. One says a specific time, which I will say that I kind of leaned more towards, so it was more concrete, it was, you know, three years. Uh, three years had to go by after someone passing away before, um, you could name something after them. The negative to that is, um. Maybe you, you're not building a new building after that point, maybe it's ten years that go by before you name another building. And you missed the opportunity to name something really great, you know, for example, a new middle school. Uh, the other option just says an appropriate period of time and we, or, you know, the board at the time. Has the option of determining what that appropriate period of time is. Of course, the negative to that is it's subjective. Um, appropriate to one person is not necessarily appropriate to another. We looked at a lot of their, a lot of other. Uh, naming policies and procedures and it really did, you know, it could be one year, it could be three years, some are five, some don't specify. So it really is up to us. I just think that, you know, it's important to have that guideline. Cause it did come up on the naming of the middle school, just, you know, um, should we have this? And how should we word it? Carol, you want to add anything?
I think that you kind of hit it, in fact, that, um, you know, it was a lively conversation. I think it's important to know that because we both came from a kind of a different perspective and we also kind of kept through, it's like, what is the historic value? And contribution that this name means to a school, to our community, because I think it's important that. It does represent our entire community, not just one sec, you know, not just one sector of it, so, um. That's where we are with that and, and we may not be making new schools, I, you know, Alyssa, what I don't remember is, you know, we constantly had people talk about. Naming gymnasiums or naming libraries or naming, you know, just, and we didn't really delve into that very much. I do get asked about that, um, but at this point, there, we do have a policy about, you know, what's, what's, what's the contribution? What's the historic parts of it and, and, and what has this person done and the example is, um, Harrison Prep. Um, not only was Bill Harrison, uh, you know, a commander at JBLM, but he also was the first mayor in the city. Which gave him his, the historical piece, which is why we pursued naming that building after him, so there was a historical. Contribution that he made to our community, so, um, you know, it's, it's, it's good that we review these and have these policies in place.
Yeah, so, and I colorful is a good way to put it, Carol and I did not, we were kind of on opposite ends. And Aaron can, uh, can attest to that, but you know, I, at the end of the day, I totally, uh, saw where she was coming from. Especially like Harrison Prep was a prime example of someone who was, you know, who is still living.
Absolutely.
It, you know, so far, you know, it was a great naming choice, I haven't heard. Maybe, all, so, uh, anyways, so it really is, you know, after we spoke, you know, it really is. Do we want to put a timeframe or, um, a specific time on it? Or do we want to leave it more open to the board at that time's interpretation of appropriate time?
And we also would maintain the, um, pieces of public comment and information, you know, we had, we always have had. Um, a, a board to decide, a committee to decide, uh, selections for us. And in as much as I know that for all of us board members, it's sometimes hard to sit back and let somebody do the groundwork on that. But I do appreciate the process of having parents, community members, staff and people who live within that area be a part of that process. So this is not just a board derivative or derived, um, suggestion.
Yeah, and I think I, it's been so long since we discussed this, but. Um, I do think, speaking along those lines, I do think we also said, uh, one of the issues was we didn't, you know. Maybe we would have liked to expand out the names a few more, to have a few more options. Uh, so, a- and we didn't feel that we could say no to all of the names because of the naming committee. So that was kind of a fine line, but I think that we had discussed that, you know, ultimately the board can decide yes or no, but at the same time. There's a naming committee and we don't want to be, you know, say thanks for your work, but you know, we don't, we're gonna go a different direction. That's not a good way to go either, so.
But that isn't, because we are accepting the recommendation from the naming committee or not accepting the, the recommendation. So that still is an option for the board to do.
Yeah, yeah, uh, and Paul.
My turn? Okay, and, and the reason we're updating this is because of the problem we had in naming, um, uh, the Thomas School, wasn't that correct?
Uh, I don't know necessarily if it's a problem, but maybe.
I wouldn't call it a problem.
Conversation that came from it and I, you know, I, the reason why I'm on the subcommittee is because I had voiced my concern. Over an appropriate time period, uh, or if we had one, um, so that's kind of where it came from, it wasn't necessarily that it was a problem, so I just wanna.
It was a discussion that we had with differing, differenting, um, opinions. And that's why it's like, that's delve into where these differences come from and where are the barriers, what are the, what are the opportunities? And that's what we kind of looked at and also we probably, you know, here, by the very fact that we combined two middle schools. Um, a lot of the community members didn't understand that, you know, if we would have kept it like the original. Um, a lot of the community members didn't understand that, you know, if we would have kept it like the original man. All those students and staff members from Woodbrook may have kind of felt like it wasn't their school. This way by renaming it, um, and we will, I I've been told, and I still believe our superintendent says we will still honor. Uh, Mrs. Mann, who was was part of the community, but this allows both schools to join, come together, and start anew. And that's, so it wasn't that we weren't happy with what we had, but just what we had has changed. And so this is a reflect of that change.
Well, I I think that's a reasonable thing. Should we, should we have something in our policy that discusses that when we're combining schools and renaming? That we that we think through that, because.
I think.
Go ahead.
No, I'm sorry, go on.
Well, you you, you know, the the historical context, you know, I mean, that that means people that have done some great things in the past, like Alice Mann. Uh, you know, I did share back when we were talking about this, that, and you know. I I had an opportunity sitting on the WASD board that to read the minutes of all the work. It was amazing what this woman did. She she, it was amazing. I mean, she took on the governor. I mean, right here in our little community, she took on the governor of this state. To get things done for education. And so in a sense, you know, the the history of Alice Mann. Could be, it is is lost a little bit, and so how do we protect the work that our predecessors have done in picking some of those names? I mean, I think that should be a consideration. However, I I do agree with what Carol said that when when we're combining two schools, I I think that's. An area that needs to be considered. Um, but.
Okay, so I just want to clarify, we didn't put anything about combining schools, so that is not at all what this.
That would be a procedure. That would be a procedure piece, not so much policy piece.
Yes, oh, and this, what we did kind of put a little bit of input on to the procedure, so I just wanted, I I think that's important to clarify when we talk to. It got it all combined together. But I think it's really important to note that we didn't add anything about combining schools. It was more so the conversation that came. Uh. From the time lapse of what would be appropriate to name after an individual.
Should we put something in about combining schools?
Well, well, what would you put to name some, I mean, that's a tricky part. That's up to the board at the time, I think. Uh, because, you know, I was personally, this isn't a secret, it's on public record. I was personally for keeping it as a man. That was one of my top choices. Uh, but at the same time, everyone had a differing viewpoint. I totally got the other side. So I don't know how you would put that in a policy of you will name a school.
Well, I I I don't see, I I I don't think the policy has to direct when it asks people to look at it and answer some of those kind of questions. So that would be a question that we may want to ask if you're going to have uh two schools can be combined. And that very well could happen with some of our buildings around the way we're going at this point in time, so I I don't know.
Well, it was considered this time. It was on the final list, wasn't it? I believe it was on the fi- it made the final, oh, no, it didn't. It didn't make the final, but it was considered. It was just a committee that said it was.
But when you're putting your policy together, you could you could put a line in there somewhere that just says, hey, consider. If that if we're gonna combine names, what 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 do we do? What what should be some of those things? And I think Carol hit a few of them that would wouldn't hurt to put in there in your policy. That's my thought.
But but that answers the question, how do you do this as opposed to what do you do? Policy should answer, what do you do? And 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 then the how is procedure, and I really think that's a procedural thing. I I really don't think, because that's the, you know, naming of a school, those those characters, characteristics. And then the how you do it um definitely is a procedure issue. So I think, Paul, you're right. Let's let, you know, let's direct the superintendent that if name schools. Uh, I mean, combining schools, there should be procedures for that. Um, but I think the policy needs to be real specific just to main naming. And then what you do is you name the school. How you do it, that's your procedure.
Any other questions or comments on it?
I know, just maybe, you know, feedback, I guess, would be nice um on your thoughts between the two different of. A specific timeframe or leaving it more mentioning it, but leaving it more open and.
I I personally kind of like it o- open just because of the conversation we're having. So I believe that a school board director is elected by his or her community. And that they're able to make decisions. Um, that are going to be in the best interest of that community. And I think there are times when it's hard to be flexible and adaptable, just like what we, you, you know, in the illustration that you did with a General Harrison, so. Um, to take away those opportunities because we're fearful that they may not make the right decision doesn't feel very empowering to me. That at the same time, it kind of goes back to what Superintendent Banner said, that, you know, you have this accountability with coaching or, you know, that. You're wanting to empower people, you want to have those conversations. But I like the idea of giving people the the freedom to make great decisions, believing that they will make great decisions. I also like uh making sure that we understand how important it is, because a name can last fifty years. And so, right, and then sometimes, you know, schools are still the hubs of our communities. And so that name is something that we really identify with. And so I I agree that we really do want to do it well, and I just want to say, Alyssa and Carol, thank you for uh looking very comprehensively. You're now going to be asking us to consider whether or not we want uh timeframes around it or not. Now, we have opportunity, you've given us inspirational ideas to have to wrestle with, and just like you and Carol got to be colorful and wrestle a little bit. I'm sure the rest of us will get to do the same, which is good. It's a healthy thing to do that, so.
Absolutely. You know, the other thing, I do want to say one thing. I know that when we did do the Thomas um naming Dr. Thomas School. Um, I did hear from people who were on the committee, and I know how much they appreciated the fact that we did take their recommendation seriously after it. Because they did lots of work. The committee spent lots of time and put lots of hours in meetings. And they did appreciate the fact that we did accept the recommendation because they did not know it was not, they knew it wasn't a slam dunk. And that there were options, so they um, and so that was hearing from citizens who felt like they were listened, listened to.
All right, if we're through with that, uh, place, then we'll move to the next section, which is uh adjourning to executive session. And I'm going to suggest that we go into executive session for one hour. And then is there a porn order, Superintendent Banner?
Yes, just um technical issue. Uh, we just recently sent another link because the last one timed out. Um, for executive session should be sent to both of your emails in terms of your district and your personal email. So please use that latest one. It came from, I believe it came from Leanna Albrecht, um, who sent the link to you.
And then board, if if you are unable, if you don't get the link, uh, please text. And then I'm gonna have Superintendent Banner. I know we all have his number. We all text the guy probably more than he would even like. But uh, give him a a text if you can, and the rest of us, we will now move to executive session uh from seven thirty to eight thirty.
Just one more, President Schaefer, just one more thing. Um, Terry Hebert will be there, and once you guys are all there, she will then exit.
Correct.
Good.
And then Superintendent Banner, we'd ask you to remain available during this time, just in case you need some clarification, because it has to do with that as per team. All right. Thank you, everyone. We will now adjourn to executive session for one hour.